Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving, prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon and welcome to the September 10th, 2018, regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City-County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation is encouraged. Please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. If you wish to address the Commission on Agenda items, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment sign-in sheet at the rear of the room now. When addressing the Commission, please state your name and address and speak directly into the microphone. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. An agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation also with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Commission when recognized by the Chair, and public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will then be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning Commissioners will ask questions, and upon a public comment will be closed, and upon a motion and a second discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I will ask Commissioner Wildes to lead us in the prayer and the pledge.
Let us bow for prayer. To Heavenly Father, we thanking you for this day's opportunity to give service to our community. Thank you for allowing us to endeavor to do good. Help us to remember that the actions that are made today are to better the surroundings in which we all live in. Help us to be proud of what we do in your name. Thanking you for this time. Amen. Let us repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wildes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Good afternoon. Buzzer?
Here.
Dix?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
Cress?
Here.
Marino?
Here.
Thrower?
Here.
Wildes?
Here.
Miss Dickerson?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Downey?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is public input for those items that are not scheduled on our agenda. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the Commission on any item that is not on our agenda today? Seeing none, we will move to item three on our agenda, Legislative Monitoring Services. Ms. Salz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Good afternoon. My name is Diane Salz, and I am your Governmental Affairs Liaison. In other words, I am your eyes, ears, and voice in Tallahassee, and it's a pleasure to be here with you today. Our mission is advocacy, and we do this through education and outreach. During the past legislative session, we have seen many bills, amendments, appropriations, requests are filed each year, and many of them have, if not direct impacts, indirect impacts, and on the Planning Commission, on the River Board, and on our MPO. And as relevant legislation is filed, I engage your Executive Director in determining the appropriate course of action. And this generally involves helping legislators to understand our unique circumstances and impress upon them the need to accommodate our needs. We commonly see legislation related to transportation funding projects, local home rule preemptions, including changes to our MPO, community redevelopment agencies. We've seen, most recently, dockless bicycle regulation, new comprehensive plan amendments or modifications, private property rights impact fees, smart city challenge grants, tourist development tax, local tax referendum. The list goes on. Texting while driving, hazardous walking conditions, red light cameras, transportation disadvantaged, legislation related to T-BARDA. Excuse me. So there's quite a bit. In the interim, when the legislature is not in session, we generally meet with key legislative delegation members to thank them for their interest and their support of the Planning Commission, the River Board, the MPO, on key issues, and also to discuss emerging issues, the status of the regional MPO study, transportation funding needs, many constituent issues relating to land use and transportation matters. Also during the interim, we monitor key regional statewide leadership groups, state agencies, councils, associations, as they develop their legislative policy positions potentially impacting Hillsborough County. And last but not least, we work to nurture and strengthen positive relationships we have with key regional and statewide officials. This summer, we've met with Senator Dana Young, and Senator Young has a very strong interest in funding our transportation projects, and she has a lot of safety concerns. We have met with Senator Darrell Roussin, and he has been Vice Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee, and he, in fact, attended on Friday our Transportation Leadership Group. We have been meeting with Jackie Toledo, Representative Jackie Toledo, strong interest in the Vision Zero movement, Representative Sean Harrison, who's a former MPO Chair. We've met with Representative Lawrence McClure. He is an emerging MPO supporter. He's learning quite a bit about the MPO. Looking into the future, we are awaiting a lot of different outcomes, constitutional amendments. On just this past Friday, the Supreme Court upheld Amendment 10. And for those of you who may not be familiar with Amendment 10, that's the constitutional amendment that'll be on the ballot, which would require the five constitutional officers to be elected rather than appointed. That's the sheriff, tax collector, property appraiser, clerk of the court. It must be approved by 60% of the voters. We are also, we'll soon know, our elected, new elected cabinet members, and also we're awaiting 140 statewide legislative seats. That's quite a bit going on. We are, as I said, busy renewing and strengthening relationships, reaching out to newly elected officials, educating folks on who we are, what we do, and what's important to the mission of the Planning Commission. We're preparing as new, as well as prior-year legislative initiatives. We'll be returning, continuing to advance the interests of the Planning Commission as directed by your Executive Director. And I want to thank you for your time this afternoon, and also for allowing me to serve you in Tallahassee. I would be very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Salz. Are there any questions from Commissioners for her on her activities? You're gonna get off easy today.
Can I just, I would just like to underscore that if there was ever something that we felt we needed to take a position on legislatively, I would be bringing that to you all to take that position. Usually what we are providing to the legislature is information about what, how a piece of legislation might impact us, or demographics, different things about Hillsborough County, again, raising the awareness of who we are and what we do. If there's ever a topic that you're aware of that you would like to have monitored, please let us know, and I can ask Diane to add that to her long list of things that she's keeping track of for us. And as you can tell, of late, it's been very transportation-focused, but in the past, you know, it's sort of swung in different directions, and we've had more of a growth management focus in prior years. There was one year where she helped us with some changes to the River Board legislation. So it varies from year to year, but I really appreciate that it's something that she's keeping track of and then letting me know when I need to weigh in on something. Thank you.
Commissioner Green, you have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Salz, and thank you, Melissa. Glad you brought that point up. I was going to ask if there was any focus that you could help, or help bring focus, let's say, rather, to our issue related to transportation and land use at the state level. That seems to be probably one of the most pressing issues for us here locally, how we can better align transportation decisions or land use decisions along with transportation, let's say. Over the years, of course, we know transportation has led the way, and we've sort of been playing catch-up relative to land use and development patterns and things like that. But if there's a way to bring more focus to that in terms of, you know, your advocacy and what you're providing with, providing state legislators, then, you know, I think that would be really, really beneficial.
If I might respond, I have a very unusual background. I actually started as a city planner, so I'm pretty decent at advocating for the need to work transportation and land use issues together in a collaborative fashion. So, and I think that when we do meet with our key legislative delegation members, both Melissa and Beth Alden and I do, through our outreach and education, emphasize the importance of this relationship, and we'll continue to do so.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Salz.
It's a pleasure serving you. Thank you.
Bring us to item number four on our agenda. As Board members know, we have an elected member that sits on the MPO, and being elected under the MPO, we also get to appoint a person to the Citizens Advisory Committee, and Mr. Richmond is our appointee.
Thank you very much, Rick Richmond, CAC appointee, representing the Planning Commission. It has been a while, but I also want to thank you for reappointing me to a new term. Thank you very much, and I enjoy sort of in that position, that capacity, so, thank you. So just wanted to update a little bit of what has been going on, some of the topics in some of our meetings recently, and then at the end, it'll be brief, but at the end, there's a lot ahead of us. I think that's more mounting than what we've discussed so far, because usually early on, there's a lot of housekeeping as far as getting the TIP Transportation Improvement Program kind of lined up and approved, so go through that. And so, we did hear the TIP for years 19 through 23, and we recommended approval, but there are still some strong concerns with some of the citizens. One with the growth in South County. They voiced a need to accelerate possibly some projects. I think DOT is actually working on that. Big Ben Road, some of the exit ramps, but then 301, and then also Big Ben Road. There was a TIP amendment recently to, it was really to re-describe allocated funds for an east-west retro, metro rapid, excuse me, project for analyzing corridors, but this has been re-described actually to focus more on connectivity between the university and downtown using Nebraska Fowler and Florida Avenue. And they're looking at everything, BRT, bus-only lanes, station locations, those type of things. I think that's tying in with some of the transit feasibility study that's ongoing now. We listened to a proposal for the West Shore Transportation Action Plan. This is a coordination effort between the West Shore Alliance and the MPO. They hired some transportation consultants to kind of put together a plan that's focused on their district, but also in alignment with the MPO and their long-range transportation plan. The action plan would outline strategies and projects to mitigate the disruption for the interstate and the intersection there at 60 and 275. So we heard that, and that was supported, but there was some concern that the private-public partnership might set a precedent, but this sort of also looks outside the box to be able to form some partnerships and really get a granular focus on what each district the challenges may be. So, and this is kind of, we get updates for, status updates for a lot of these projects, but a lot of these projects encumber, or encompass a great deal of change, forward-thinking, and buy-in. So, you know, we have Tampa Bay Next that's ongoing. There's been a reset that continues on to go. We're not sure, you know, there's been some movement, but I think it's still kind of a fluid process and concept, really. T-BARDA, there's been some legislative change with that, but they're also doing a study for regionalization of MPOs, so to start planning a transportation plan at a regional level instead of county. HART, they're doing the Regional Transit Feasibility Study. City of Tampa is a streetcar extension, and then the MPO is updating their long-term, long-range transportation plan update. And then I threw the sales tax referendum that's on there that could, you know, help or hinder any or all of these projects, really. So this all ties together. There's a lot of information. The citizens on the committee are trying to, trying to absorb all this as much as possible, but there's a lot on the horizon here that's for consideration. And I did see that there's a workshop this afternoon for transit-oriented development that will be interesting to hear and listen on that, too. So that's what I have. I appreciate it. Did also, I was recently selected for the MPO, CAC representative on the T-BARDA board, so to represent our committee. So that was just recent. My first meeting will be two weeks from now, whenever T-BARDA meets. So appreciate it if anyone has any questions.
Excellent. Thanks, Rick. Is there any, Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Rick. You gave my MPO report, but that's good. The only thing, the only thing, the only thing I would say, there was one, there was one study that's going on, the West...
West Bush Boulevard?
Bush Boulevard, right. Study that's also going on.
Yes, that's also...
One of the things that, and I'll continue to bring it up until I sort of see this, see it happening, but the issue I brought up with Ms. Salz about coordinating transportation and land use, a lot of these studies that we see on the MPO board, oftentimes I get the sense that they're somewhat isolated. They just focus on that one issue, and yet, and they're not, and oftentimes, too, it doesn't seem like, you know, with all these studies going on, they're connected, and they should be. They should be coordinated together, but they just seem like they're isolated efforts, and that's troubling to me. And I'd like to see, and I'll continue, like I say, continue to advocate on the MPO board for better coordination and just making sure that as these, as these transportation studies, you know, continue, and obviously there's a lot more on the horizon, I'm sure, but they look at, they look at big-picture issues and they contextualize, you know, these transportation issues much, much better, in a much better way, rather. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. I was actually curious if, to Melissa, our director, if the subject that Commissioner Green is bringing up could be possibly a subject of another workshop for this group with Beth, perhaps, and yourself to weigh in.
Yes. We were just talking this morning about, as we get the results from the It's Time Tampa Bay survey that's ongoing right now, that closes October 1st, setting up a workshop to talk about, because theoretically, the long-range transportation plan, which will have this regional component, should be the vehicle that coordinates all of the things that are listed on the screen and brings it all together with also what we can afford. So the idea being for us to have a workshop with you all to talk about those results and what you see as important coming from them from a land use perspective, knowing that the selection of different transportation projects to go into the long-range transportation plan and be funded will have an influence on our land use pattern. So I think we were looking at November, December for that. Okay.
More point, Ms.? The, one of the points I brought up at the meeting, Rick, you were there, the, with West Tampa study that's going on, it was called a multimodal study, which I understand is fine, but it dealt with walking and biking, because, walking and bicycling, because I understand it's part of the, an update to the City of Tampa's walk-bike plan. But I asked a question about the boundaries that they used for the study. They took it all the way across Dale Mayberry into the West Shore area to Loos, and you have a multimodal study going on, but you've got a planned multimodal facility two blocks away that the study doesn't even address. That doesn't make sense to me. And that's the kind of coordination I'm talking about. So I think, you know, we just need better, better coordination along those lines, so...
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Richmond from Commissioners? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to item number five on our agenda, North Alexander Street Land Use and Market Study. Mr. Hudson, long time no see.
Good afternoon, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. I'm here with Tom Lavash of WTLNA to present to you this morning, or this afternoon, I should say, the North Alexander Street Corridor Land Use and Marketing Study. And this was a study that was bequested to the Planning Commission from the city to analyze an area that a new road was recently completed in 2014 that wasn't really envisioned in their current Imagine 2040 Long Range Comprehensive Plan, and also their Northeast Plant City Area Master Plan, and want us to go in there and reevaluate this to see if any changes were needed to either one of those documents. In general, we were looking in this study to accomplish several goals and to focus certain efforts in dealing with improving the coordination between Plant City and Hillsborough County as the city annexes into this, grows in its area through voluntary annexation, also to give some direction to the city on what would be the appropriate land uses when those parcels come in or serve with public utilities by the municipality. We also engaged WTLNA to give us some analysis dealing with demographics and a market analysis of the carrying capacity of the area and what we can envision happening in that in the upcoming planning horizon. Also, we look to identify some community and neighborhood focal points that could serve that corridor and those residents that move into the area over that timeframe, that planning horizon, and as I mentioned previously, to evaluate the currently adopted policy direction and different documents to see if any changes were warranted. This is the study area for the North Alexander Street Market and Land Use Analysis. As you can see, to the north, it's bounded by East Knights Griffin Road, to the south by Interstate 4, and on the east and west, about 1,500 feet east or west of Paul Buckman Highway or North Alexander Street. This area is approximately 1,000 acres. We wanted to be sure to have a lot of public outreach and public participation in this study, and we've done that through several different efforts. We started the process with stakeholder interviews of about a dozen prominent citizens and business leaders. Those stakeholders included the current mayor and vice mayor of Plant City. From there, we also had an open house on May 23rd to share some of the early products with the property owners in that 1,000-acre study area. There was about 250 property owners, and we notified all those via mailing, and about 60 attended. And you can see in the finished document, we did address many of the comments that they provided to us at that event. We provided copies and garnered input from also Hillsborough County, the Florida Department of Transportation, and we also had our products up online for those who reside outside the study area to review and provide us with input. To give you a little bit of an idea of how the area is today, what you see in front of you is the adopted future land use, both for the county and Plant City for the study area. The northern two-thirds of the study area is very rural in character. It's an unincorporated county. It is not served by any public utilities today, and you can see that reflected in the land use, which is a Hillsborough County Residential 1 or 1 dwelling unit per acre. That encompasses about 60% of the current study area. Those areas on the lower third, or the southern third of the study area, are in Plant City and are served by public utilities, and for the most part have predominantly a residential 4, or 4 dwelling units per acre, which is a suburban development pattern in the lowest land use designation that's currently offered within the Plant City Conference of Plan. We also looked very closely what the environmental resources were in the area. Most of those reside in the southern third of the study area and are associated with Pemberton Creek, both floodplains and wetland areas, and you can see those highlighted on the map. Particularly the area around the interchange of Alexander Street and Interstate 4 have a lot of these environmental resources, and therefore we expect that this area will not develop to the extent that you may expect from the interchange with Interstate 4 because of those limitations. But we did want to take those into account when we did our overall analysis. This is the Northeast Master Plan Preferred Land Use Scenario. This was developed back in 2007, prior to, obviously, the North Alexander Street roadway was constructed, and therefore really didn't take into account that facility. You can see it's predominantly residential 4, which again is the lowest plan category as far as density is concerned within Plant City's Conference of Plan, and makes up almost 40% of those lands that were within the study area. And you can see that for the most part, there's very limited commercial and industrial development expected based on the Northeast Master Plan as it stands today. After Mr. Lavash gives his presentation on marketing, I will show you a comparison of how we recommend, we're recommending change in the land use pattern based on the analysis that he and others provided. This is the transportation network for the study area. Basically, the east and west roads of Knights Griffin Road and San Martin Road are county facilities, operate as a collector and arterial. The north-south road, which is Paul Buckman Highway and North Alexander Street, are state facilities. All four of those facilities are operating at an acceptable level of service, either a B or a C. The other major facility, of course, in the study area is Interstate 4, which is near capacity at the bottom of the map. Again, that, of course, is, as you're aware, is a state facility. For the most part, the roadways within the study area are acting, are working well within the adopted level of service that's been established in the Plant City Conference of Plan. Though we have quite a few recommendations that I'll go over at the end of the study and the presentation today, there are not, we don't include any major transportation recommendations based on that. We looked at the primary documents in our study review for the determine where we think changes might be warranted. We looked at Plant City's Vision and Strategic Guide. As I mentioned previously, the Northeast Plant City Area Master Plan, their Conference of Plan, the Imagine 2040 Plant City Conference of Plan, and the county's Conference of Plan. And again, after Tom finishes his portion of the presentation, I will go over some recommendations that we think are warranted for changes, both in the Northeast Plant City Area Master Plan and the Imagine Plant City, Imagine 2040. City Area Master Plan and the Imagine Plant City, Imagine 2040 Plant City Conference of Plan. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Tom for a moment to talk about the market analysis he did for the corridor.
Great, thank you, Mark. For the record, I'm Tom Lavash. I'm a managing principal of WTL Plus A. My firm is a real estate and economic development consulting firm based up in Washington, D.C. and over the last several years, we've assisted both the Planning Commission and Economic Development on a number of studies around the country, around the county. The 56th Street Orient Road area for redevelopment study, the North Airport area, the Innovation District up around USF, the Plant City study, which is now going back a year, and we're currently working with the Planning Commission on the 2045 LRTP, which is significant enough to make my eyes cross, cross sides. And they call economics the dismal science, and so if you'll indulge me, please, I will endeavor not to make your eyes glaze at the following. We've got some numbers to share with you, and we'll endeavor to be as brief and concise as possible. So, we were asked to really focus on sort of two key questions in this market study. One is to determine if the growth assumptions that had been identified in the 2045, or 2040 plan, if those are realistic, and if not, then what might they be? And two, it's really to support the efforts of the Planning Commission and city staff in identifying a realistic and an appropriate land use plan for the North Alexander Street To that end, couple of numbers to throw out here. The city's historic rate of growth over the last 26 years up through 2016 was about 1.96% per year. That's about 14, almost 15,000 people over that 26-year period. By contrast, the Imagine 2040 Plan is suggesting a growth rate that would literally jump to 2.69% per year, or about 33,000, over 33,000 new residents to Plant City over the next 24 years. And to put that a little bit more realistically, the historic rate has been about 500 to 600 people per year over the last 26 years, but that proposed growth rate in the 2040 Plan would jump to over 1,400 people per year, every year moving to Plant City. So, that's a significant contrast. So, we were, we were asked to look more carefully at that. By contrast, during the 1990s, the city's growth rate exceeded that 2.69. It was about 2.83% per year. During the 2000s, however, that significantly declined to about 1.4% per year, and then more recently, over the, between 2010 and 2016, it was similarly about 1.4% per year. So, significant growth and a slight decline, and then the prognostication would be suggested, would be to, for that growth to continue. While that growth may be achievable, we think it's predicated, and this is where we're wearing our banker's hat, if you'll allow me to do so, that growth rate may be achievable, but it is predicated on a number of things. Sustained job growth, which is a significant challenge, because Plant City is competing against Lakeland, is competing against every other municipality in Florida and elsewhere around the country. The availability of capital for financing, for construction, for permanent financing, not surprising to developers. No recession, and we don't know when that, when the next recession will hit. And of course, the availability of developable parcels and entitlements. Those are the, you know, the key assumptions in that regard. When we think about digesting a geography to understand what market support there will be for different land uses, and in this case, this is looking at retail, we define what we call as a trade area. And today, everything north of I-4 with the spine, the commercial spine being on North Alexander Street, everything north of I-4 is significantly rural. There are only about 5,700 residents. And over the next five years, the forecast suggests that that geography, which is almost 10 square miles, will only grow by, to about 6,000 residents. So, it's not, it's not considering Vareya, North Park Isles, some of the significant proposed residential projects that have been entitled in this geography. Vareya is just off this, off this site to the right. As market analysts, we look at things like incomes and retail spending potentials and what age cohorts are growing, because that directly informs different types of housing potentials. So, we look at that at both a citywide and a countywide level, and then drill down as part of our analysis. Every year, countywide, households spend about $18,000 per year on retail. In Plant City, that's about $15,000 per year, so a little bit lower than the county. And in this trade area, it's about 15,200, so generally comparable to the city as a whole. So, we're going to come back to that issue. One of the key barometers of demand for what we call workplace real estate, that's industrial parks, office buildings, retail centers, and the like, is employment growth. And DEO, at the state level, is forecasting that Hillsborough County will add about 84,000 new jobs over the next eight years. And if Plant City, which today comprises about 3.5% of the county in terms of total jobs, it's what we call fair share. If that fair share is maintained, it would suggest that there'd be about 2,900 new jobs in Plant City over that eight-year forecast period. This table illustrates, and this is Census Bureau data, illustrates for the plants, within the city of Plant City, that job growth over about a 10-year period, only through 2015, and I'll come back to that in a minute. And you can see here in this table the significant impacts of the recession. In the city itself, there were about 3,000 jobs lost as a result of the recession. Not surprising, it's a function, and I think Hillsborough County as a whole lost 55,000 jobs during the recession, 2007 to about 2010, 2011. Loss of manufacturing jobs. On the other hand, a gain in wholesale trade and services, and that is generating direct demand for warehousing and distribution and the buildings you see on County Line Road, for example. But over this 10-year window, it basically illustrates that job growth was flat. Significant loss during the recession and a significant gain after 2011. More recent data from Dun &amp; Bradstreet suggests that the city has about 21,000 jobs, so an even greater bump since 2015, which is certainly a good thing. In terms of, we begin to look at land use factors and marketability factors for logistics and distribution, for warehousing and functions. Great geographic location, excellent regional access, obviously, with I-4 and the interchanges, proximity to strawberries and agricultural production, workforce. So, these are sort of the metrics that we, as your real estate analysts, look at to understand opportunity. The key number on this chart is the annual absorption. And so, if you occupied an industrial, you were a tenant in an industrial building, and you renewed your lease, but you didn't occupy any more space, that doesn't count as part of this 84,000 number. If you renewed your lease and expanded the amount of space you occupy, that's what we call net absorption. So, that's, that's what real estate analysts look at to understand as a key barometer of demand for specific types of real estate. So, on the average, over the last 10 years, Plant City has absorbed about 84,000 square feet per year. You think about the size of those industrial, new industrial buildings, warehouse buildings on County Line Road, which are 2, 3, 400,000 square feet. This is a metric that the bankers would look at when they think about financing new development. In the last two years, bear with me here, in the last two years, there's been almost 500,000 square feet of new industrial space built in Plant City. That's a significant number. This is speculative. This is not owner-user. This is open to the market for lease. And there's been another 300,000 square feet or so of owner-user industrial space. In addition to that, and this is where we're going to jump to a chart that will make your eyes glaze, my apologies. In addition to that, there is another 900,000 square feet or so of industrial space in site plan review. Mark, has it been approved?
It is still market.
So, this is a chart that illustrates opportunity for logistics and distribution over this eight-year window. And depending on, or presuming the 84,000 square, new jobs in the county, that would translate somewhere between 7 and 11 million square feet of demand for new industrial space. If Plant City maintains its share, about 9%, that would be somewhere between 700 and a million square feet of space. As a banker, we want to net out some of the existing vacant space. We want that to be occupied first before we're going to finance new construction. And so, what this suggests is somewhere between 600 and 900, what we call net demand. But they've just built about half a million. So, we're whittling it down to account for supply being added to the market. And what this suggests, over the next eight years, in Plant City is demand for about 100 to 400,000 square feet of logistics and distribution space. But 800 to 900 is in plan review. So, you can see the disconnect, and what this suggests is that in order for that to be absorbed by the marketplace, that the city's fair share would have to bump up. And what it suggests is it reinforces the importance of business retention and recruitment strategies, all the great work that the EDC is doing to bring businesses to Plant City. That's going to be pretty critical for this use. Some metrics on housing. I think the important number here to remember is the historic annual starts of new housing units that are built in Plant City has averaged about 158 units a year over the last 16 years. We'll come back to that number. One of the key findings in the study was that the city's multifamily market, pardon me, has very, very strong, very low vacancies. New multifamily projects that are built are absorbed, are rented immediately. That's a positive sign. So, this is another chart, bear with me if you will. This is an analysis that says if the city grew to the 71,500 people that the 2040 Plan identifies, and if the city maintains its average household size, those 33,000 new residents would equate to about 11,900 housing units at that average household size. What that would mean is that instead of building 158 units a year, the city would have to jump to over 500 units a year, every year sustained through 2040. That's a significant increase. What the analysis further does is to account for what we know to be the known residential projects today. So, Vareya, North Park Isles, annexations down near Walden Lake, and perhaps Midtown, new units in Midtown. So, to, as a means of being conservative, we say those units, all of those units in those proposed projects will be built. So, that gets sort of sliced off the top. And it suggests that there is about demand for 6,700 units, what we call unallocated, meaning they're not dedicated to any specific project or location. And Mark, if you want to jump in here to discuss the density issue.
Yes, I just wanted to point out, and just so you can look at this later when I show you the recommended preferred land use scenario for this corridor, that Tom was looking at the residential densities per acre. And currently, as I mentioned previously, the land use, preferred land use scenario shows that'd be about 4 dwelling units per acre. Staff is recommending that that be brought out to a more, to a higher density at about 6 units per acre. And Tom's worked out the calculations here based on both of those. But we are envisioning, based on the age cohorts that Tom is seeing coming to the area, which is particularly move-up home buyers and more elderly population, it's interested in age-restricted communities, and also having the opportunities to build assisted living facilities and facilities such as that nature, we see that a higher density is called for and warranted within the study of the corridor.
That said, from a market perspective, we look at what we call capture rates, and if those densities are bumped up, that would require a capture rate of up to, I can't read my own numbers, 51%. We think that's a little aggressive, and we think a more reasonable capture rate of any future housing in the North Alexander Street Corridor would be on the order of 20, 25, 30%. So, a little bit lower than, you know, so the second capture rate of 36% would be a little bit more reasonable. That doesn't suggest you can't do the increased densities, but the absorption period would perhaps be a little bit slower. It's a, the city is a tertiary office location. The average office building size in Plant City is only about 5,000 square feet. It's what we would call a garden office market. Think of all the professional office parks on Bloomingdale Avenue, for example, in Brandon, similar type of product, and demand that's really generated by rooftops, by households. So, the State Farm agent, the doctor, the dentist, the, you know, that sort of professional services category. An inventory of less than a million square feet, about 3% of the county, and limited new construction, and we'll get back to this absorption number again, only about 17,000 square feet a year over the last five years, and only about 10,000 square feet of absorption pace over the last 10 years. So, again, using Dun &amp; Bradstreet's hot-off-the-press number for jobs in the city, if Plant City maintains its fair share, again, that would suggest about 2,900 jobs, and this analysis illustrates, well, how many of those will be office-using sectors? And what would that office employee occupy in terms of an occupancy, a square foot occupancy? So, this would suggest about a quarter of a million square feet of opportunity, citywide, over the next eight years. Again, these are assuming DEO's countywide job forecasts and drilling down. But the office absorption has only averaged 17,000 square feet a year. So, it would take fully 11 years to absorb that 200,000 square feet. That's not financeable in the eyes of the capital markets. So, it reinforces the importance of business retention and recruitment. You'll continue to generate demand. This 200,000 could be 10, 20,000 square foot buildings. It could be a continuation of the smaller garden office product, but it's not going to be the USAA regional headquarters, for example. So, cautionary tale with regard to the office market and the ability to finance new office development, particularly multi-tenant or speculative office development. Some factoids on retail, about a million and a half square feet citywide, and limited new construction, limited absorption. Again, this, I think the numbers on this slide illustrate the importance of rooftop growth, of encouraging new residential development citywide. Positive thing, declining vacancies, which is good. I would clarify that the retail sales number, the $900 million, also includes that wholesale trade, so, pardon me, some of the tenants that occupy logistics buildings on County Line Road, for example. That's not what we think of as traditional retail. So, that's about 191 million square feet that ought to come off that 900 million. The point of that is that if you take the citywide retail sales and you take the inventory, that equates to what we call a retail sales performance per square foot, and you're on the order of $300 per square foot in sales, that's investment-grade retail. That's a really positive thing in the eyes of the capital markets. And in terms of opportunity, every household across the country will support somewhere between 5 and 7 square feet of retail. The typical suburban format grocery store, a Publix, needs 12,000 to 14,000 people in its trade area to build a grocery store, to be supportable. The grocery industry is challenged by razor-thin margins today, and the trade area today only has, it has less than 6,000 people. So, you need to double the population in that geography in order to support one grocery store. We've always heard that, in our world, that it takes 3,500-- We've always heard that, in our world, that it takes thirty-five hundred people to support a 7-Eleven. Begin to think about that in terms of opportunities for retail development. The other issue here is that because there's very limited retail in the study area, in the trade area today, forty million dollars a year in household spending leaks out. It's what we call retail leakage. There's an opportunity on North Alexander Street to capture some increment, some portion of that forty million dollars a year, which is a positive thing. So key message is that the more rooftops strengthen retail opportunities, and you have leakage that can be recaptured. And we don't have a slide for hotel, but we looked at the hotel market as part of the study. The capital markets typically want to see occupancies in hotels between sixty-five and seventy-two percent per year before they'll finance a construction of a new hotel. Today, the hotels in Plant City, and we also looked at Lakeland, are averaging about fifty-nine percent, fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent. So we have a ways to go before opportunities for hotel might be possible. So with that, I appreciate your indulging me on what can be very dry information. So open to any questions you may have.
I will go ahead and go over the recommendations real briefly, and then, Tom, can I answer any questions you might have? There are about a dozen or so recommendations in the report, from our staff to the city, Plant City Commission. Tom focused on a few, but the first one is we believe that we should look closely at the overall population and employment projections for Plant City. As Tom mentioned, that effort is already ongoing. I think it is clear that Plant City is transitioning from a small community to a mid-sized city. But there is some discussion about what is the planning horizon when that will actually come to fruition. We also believe that we should update and develop a new preferred land use scenario for this corridor, particularly for the, that was originally done for the Northeast Master Plan. And I'll give you a little bit of an idea of how we think that should change in a slide in a moment. Also, there was a recommendation of Plant City's comprehensive plan to extend Joe McIntosh Road. At the time that that recommendation was made, it was envisioned that North Alexander Street would be further west than it actually was built at. And in talking to the Plant City city engineer, he felt that the geometrics didn't work anymore, and he recommended that facility be removed from the comprehensive plan and removed from future consideration. We also believe there should be some changes made to the Northeast Plant City Area Master Plan. In particular, this study covered twenty-eight acres that wasn't within the original study area. We feel it's important to bring that in. As I mentioned earlier, we feel that the base density should be increased from residential six, to residential six from residential four, based particularly in some of the information that Tom provided dealing with what we envision the age cohorts of, that are be coming into the area and the land use and the living environment that they're going to be desired to reside. We also identified some focal points for the area as it develops, particularly Sam Allen and Paul Buckman Highway at that intersection. And also giving some opportunities for some manufacturing distribution opportunities up near Knights Griffin Road. This graphic shows you the Northeast Master Plan area of the corridor that we studied as it exists today and staff's reevaluation of that. And moving from north to south, we see that having an activity area or a zone near Knights Griffin and North Alexander Street, as you can see on this graphic. And then moving further south, you can see that envisioned industrial parcel to offer those warehousing and distribution facilities. You can see that, in general, the lighter yellow color of the residential four transitioned into the darker brighter yellow of the residential six, again, increasing the densities from four units per acre to six units per acre. I see a little bit more defined community activity zones, particularly at Paul Buckman and Sam Allen Road. And you can also, we're also going to handle the addressing of the environmental resources and the protection of such through an overlay and not actually on the land use map. So you can see some of those areas being removed and replaced with the corresponding land uses, particularly down by Alexander Street and I-4 showing that interchange. Even though the development there will be quite limited based on those environmental attributes, it's still an interchange and may have some limited opportunities for non-residential growth. This graphic just shows you the change in acreage from the preferred land use scenarios assists today to what it would be if the city commission directed staff to make those changes. You can see most land uses have increased in the amount of acres, for example, commercial and industrial. In particular, residential sixes gained by about twenty-eight percent of the total area. And residential four has been reduced considerably by about two hundred and twelve acres. And you can see that the environmental areas are no longer incorporated here because we're handling them as an overlay. So this shows you the transition of the acreage in the corridor's preferred land use from what it is today to what staff would recommend. We do believe it's an appropriate area for Plant City to expand into and to continue to encourage voluntary annexations. We feel that they need to continue to discuss this transition of going from this rural development pattern to a more urban development pattern with Hillsborough County to be sure that transition is smooth. There will be the need to obviously offer additional opportunities for school enrollment in this area and for the city to continually meet with the Hillsborough County School District. Most of the schools in the, that serve Plant City have adequate capacity. However, Plant City is near or at capacity, Plant City High School is near or at capacity. So those will be an issue that will need to be addressed as this residential growth occurs. We didn't see any major transportation issues arise. However, we feel that the city needs to continue to work with the Hillsborough County MPL and work through those processes to address any transportation issues as they rise. And also to begin preliminary analysis based on how they're going to serve the remainder of the two-thirds of the study area with utilities, solid waste, fire, police protection, et cetera. There were some several comments concerning the truck traffic routes in the area and protecting those residential areas from, through truck traffic. Most of those are being referred to the city engineer. And there is a small pocket neighborhood there that has commercial land use, even though it's a residential neighborhood. And we want to protect that neighborhood, and we recommend that we do more in-depth analysis of how, what means we can to be sure that those residents are protected from any encroachment of non-residential uses into their neighborhood. And with that, that concludes our presentation, and Tom and I are prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Mark. Are there any comments, concerns, questions from Commissioners, Commissioner Green?
Yes, thank you, thank you for the report. This is online? The study is online?
Yes, this report is online.
Okay. So, North Alexander and Paul Buckman Highway, this is considered a growth area for the city of Plant City? I mean, is it moving more towards the north?
We did the Northeast Master Plan back in 2007. And basically, based on our analysis, we feel that the predominant area of growth in Plant City will be to the northeast. And this is the easternmost, excuse me, the westernmost edge of that study area. So we do feel that this is an area that the city will be growing into.
Okay, and is that primarily because of its proximity to I-4?
That is one of the major aspects of why we see that this area is going to grow. Also, there are utilities that the city is going to be able to offer there currently and also expand into the area.
I just had a question about the retail aspect of your analysis, though, because this, let's see. This road connects up to Zephyr Hills? Thirty-nine just goes on up to?
Eventually, if you continued north on State Road Thirty-Nine, which is the extension of this road, you would eventually hit Three-O-One, and from Three-O-One you would go up to Zephyr Hills.
Okay. I was particularly interested in the retail aspect of this because I'm wondering, would it be on Paul Buckman Highway or Alexander Street? Or, and if so, what was the outlook on the prospects for retail in that, either one of those corridors?
You know, let me preface a response by noting that the retail industry is in significant turmoil today. Not the least of which is as a result of online shopping among competition and consolidations and look at the closures of Sears and et cetera around the country. So that said, any retail opportunity will be driven by rooftop growth, and it will need to be in locations that provide significant visibility, frontage, and traffic. So whatever street has the highest traffic counts will determine, and best visibility and easy-in, easy-out access will determine where that retail will be located.
But more along the lines of service retail or neighborhood-based?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think the early opportunities we had, our analysis suggests about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet might be supportable. That is what we would call a community center. Neighborhood centers go up to about a hundred thousand square feet. Anything larger than that, one hundred to two hundred or so is a community center. But at that size, a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, an anchor becomes critical. And whether that's a grocery anchor, today, a grocery store would not be supportable. Is it an unanchored center that will have more difficulties leasing? So a lot of issues, both market and physical and industry, to think about, industry meaning the retail industry.
I've noticed also there's been a number of distribution centers that have sort of popped up in recent years between Hillsborough and Polk County. I travel that corridor very frequently. My hometown is in Winter Haven, so I'm back and forth a lot. And I would have to say it's probably close to, I know it's over half a million square feet at least that I've seen in the recent past. Now, is this also an opportunity to identify the potential to capture some of that in the Plant City area?
It's a great question because the premise of your question is that Plant City is competing against Lakeland. And, you know, that's, we're all in this together. But from a real estate perspective, the intermodal center over in Winter Haven is a significant economic engine that is driving demand for the logistics and the warehousing and distribution functions.
But we've got the port on this side.
That's right, that's right. And ready access with interchange, interchanges with I-4, correct.
Exactly. Good, thank you.
Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was a great presentation by both you gentlemen, thank you very much. I had a question, a clarification, I guess, really about the growth rates that you were talking about earlier on. So what we're looking at potentially is an overestimation of future growth rates?
I think to achieve the growth rate by 2040, yes, it would be an overestimation. It's probable that that growth is achievable. But is it 2045, is it 2050? This is the crystal ball gazing of forecasts, forecasting.
Okay, and with that overestimation and potential rechecking of the growth rate, our staff's response was kind of to increase densification?
Well, it wasn't so much to increase it as because of the age cohorts that we're envisioning. And basically, we're looking at an older age cohort, those, like I mentioned earlier, the move-up buyers, also the age-restricted communities, and they tend to, are looking for smaller lot sizes. Again, they're looking for different types of land use patterns that are more applicable to their lifestyle. So the residential six tends to lend itself to that, where, for example, the residential four in Plant City does not. For example, assisted living facility would not be allowed within a residential four land use, but would in a residential six. So we think it's a more appropriate baseline to be using for that. As Tom was mentioning, I think that it's the planning horizon that, I think the city will be achieving the ultimate population projections that are in current comprehensive plan, which is a little over seventy thousand. I think the debate is whether they're going to do it by 2040 or 2045 or 2050. And also, we feel that the residential six land use pattern is a more efficient use of the land than the more suburban pattern of residential four. Obviously, at some point, there will, there's additional properties, additional property will not become available. We want to be sure that they don't incur a lot of urban sprawl and that they use what lands available to them in an efficient manner.
To amplify Mark's response, I think it reinforces the importance, and Hillsborough County understands this, in creating walkable places, creating place-making is the planning buzzword, as we all know. And developers are responding. And opportunities to increase the density, even if it's over a smaller geography, lend themselves to encouraging a mix of housing product, encouraging not only for age-restricted or active adult or retirees, but also for millennials. When you think about the success, the market response to Winthrop Town Center, for example, and other locations, other projects like that, that will increasingly become opportunities in the county. I think it's really important. So it is, in part, market and in part, planning and land use policies.
Being, and I also had another question, being that it was age-driven kind of thing there, I also wondered if you looked at any other types of housing besides ALF and, you know, more mature housing for like workforce housing? Because you kind of talked about, you brought in this element of needing kind of commercial, you know, big commercial kind of going out there. If you gave any thought to workforce housing in that region as opposed to, you know, the ALF and?
This was not a financial analysis. So we did not significantly focus on price points, what we call price points. What should that housing be priced at? That would be a subsequent effort. But it, in terms of marketability, when the EDC, when Jake Austin's group, for example, is targeting business recruitment, he needs to tout the region's labor force and proximity to that labor force and proximity to workforce and affordable housing. Working in Palm Beach Gardens, for example, on a project, and Palm Beach Gardens is calling it essential services housing, which I think is a great buzzword because it broadens to, you know, the police officer, the fireman, the librarian, et cetera, the teacher. So it's an important consideration, but we did not specifically address that in the study.
Okay, and one final question I had, we kind of glazed over transportation really quickly here. I was just wondering, I mean, you talked about the grade levels of the roads, and really, my question goes towards public transportation. What kind of public transportations are in the area? How does that look on a future horizon? If we're going to be densifying, how are the people, especially these older people, these, you know, twilight years?
There is no public transportation in this area today or envisioned in the near future. But again, back to the land use patterns that we're promoting, I think at some point that will lend itself more to be able to offer that type of transportation to that area and serve that, those communities than if we had a lower density and a more rural pattern. So it's kind of a chicken and egg type of thing. You need really the densities and rooftops there to actually serve it with transit. And I think what is being proposed there would lend itself to transit, but there's none being envisioned, at least in the near future.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Dix.
Thank you. Mark and Tom, it was a great presentation, very, very thoughtful. I did have one observation that kept ringing in my head as you were going through it, is in math, we can, you know, we can cause numbers to come up to any result that we really want them to do. And it seemed to me that you were taking the county's overall growth rate and as a result, then reflecting upon Plant City and saying, based upon its size and its fair share, it should then grow by this amount, which is less than what the projected amount previously was. My only concern is to suggest to you that the growth rate of Plant City may actually be greater than that fair share. And it really has more to do with intangibles that I don't know that you can necessarily put a number to, but I'd love for you to at least consider it. Because as you're looking at it, you're not going to have the same equal growth pattern throughout the entire county. And as we continue to grow and become a more dense county, many developers will begin to look at Plant City and other regions of the county, but particularly Plant City, for the ability to work with a very cooperative government. You know, you refer to, for example, those developments that are going in on the north part of the county, and also just within the last few months, the ones that are coming in from the south part of the county. As you talk to the owners of those areas and to the developers of those areas, they will very clearly tell you that one of the reasons they have asked for voluntary annexation, which both of you are encouraging, is because it's much simpler and easier and a... which both of you are encouraging, is because it's much simpler and easier and a more productive session in working with the city of Plant City than it is in working with the county. And as a result of that, I think you may well be surprised to see that those growth patterns and that growth rate that we're talking about might well be achieved by 2040 as opposed to stretching it, stretching it out.
And I think that what Tom was pointing out is it's just something that we need to look a little bit closer at. I mean, our original projections for the Imagine 2040 Plan had us at 71,000 by that horizon year. And we are in the process of reevaluating and looking that a bit closer. And you are quite right. It is possible that we may come back to you when that process is done and say, we think that those projections are still valid, based on our further analysis. There are several additional voluntary annexations that are actually in the process right now that are being looked at for additional residential development, particularly North Park Isles, expanding to a larger development than it is today. So we're not saying that those, what's in the plan today is incorrect, but we just need to look at it very closely to be sure we're comfortable with it. So when the city of Plant City does its next update, that we have some valid population projections and develop the rest of the plan accordingly.
We had done a couple of scenario tests as part of our, our housing analysis. We illustrated, one of them, we illustrated the most aggressive, to get to 71,000, this is what you would need to do. The other scenario suggests about 59,000 residents. So that's, right now, the city is about 37,000 and change. That's still a growth rate of over 22,000 new residents by 2040, which is a solid number, very solid number. So I think the other, that's a great question, and it's, it's part of, as real estate market analysts, we're, we're looking at forecasts, and we typically hesitate to go, in our analysis, anything beyond 10 years, because so many factors can change. And we've got to consider, as I noted previously, interest rates and job growth and a recession, and so many of the macroeconomic factors that are beyond the control of everybody in this room as part of that. So we want to be reasonable, we want to be conservative, and if, you know, if we, you know, prove us wrong, and if we are so, and the growth is better than that, more power to Plant City.
And let me just follow up, too, is, is there's also, in addition to the intangibles, also consider, as you're advocating for a density change to R6, which I used to meet, I used to be vehemently opposed to. But as I see the projections of the county, you know, Hillsborough County as a whole growing by an additional 600,000 over the next however many years, you know, I've become conscious and realistic enough to recognize that the density has to, has to begin to change. So I've become, you know, I've become a reluctant proponent of saying, sure, R6 makes sense. And I think you'll find that, that many of the decision-makers in Plant City are also coming to that recognition and realization. What that equates to, however, is that with the cost of land being lower out there, which you indicated and confirmed, it makes those units at R6 much more economical than R6 happens to be in other parts of the county. And again, economics drive growth. And so it's one more reason to suggest to you that I wouldn't be too, too overly concerned with saying that this area should only get its fair share and might, the growth may not exceed that, that amount. Thanks.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Commissioner Dix raises a very relevant point about intangibles, because I'm sitting here thinking about, I have two relatives who commute from Winter Haven to Tampa every day. And where they would never consider moving to Plant City, previously, I'm thinking, they probably would now to cut, have, cut their commute time in half or, or less even. And, and because you sort of waded into this, Tom, you and Mark, you brought it up, so I'm going to follow up on it a little bit. So could an area like this be considered, after you've done your, you know, your analysis of all these, these different sectors, let's say, could an area like this be considered, something similar to Winthrop, like a town center area, or a destination, or some type of mixed-use district?
Plant City has a couple of places where a Winthrop-type of area might be developed, and this is one. It would need some substantial redevelopment along Sam Allen and either Paul Butman or Alexander Street. There's another area that's being looked at closely, which is called the Mixed Use Gateway on the south part of town, near Highway 60, which would have easy commutes into Brandon and into Tampa. Also, they're looking to redevelop their, their midtown, as you've probably heard of in the past, and, and the Planning Commission is helping them with some additional work for that. And all three of those areas could have that easily walkable environment with a mix of uses that would draw different groups of residents who are looking for that more urban lifestyle. Sometimes I, I mentioned that Plant City has a very good suburban lifestyle pattern. If you're looking for a rural lifestyle, there's many opportunities outside of the city and the rural parts of the county. What Plant City is lacking, to a great extent, is a more urban, vibrant area, and that's what we're trying to create, particularly in midtown and some of these more satellite areas like, like the Mixed Use Gateway.
Thank you.
Commissioner Buzza.
Just one comment, and maybe you can address it, you know, in being Plant City resident. I-4 capacity has been a big driver of development for us, and I constantly, I am on I-4, unfortunately. And I think the capacity is obviously dwindling. If you look at the northeast quadrant there, in Varia, I think it's 2,400 homesites, which may or may not happen. North Park Isles, 500 homesites.
North Park Isles is currently approved for about 1350, but I expect, I expect that to go up by a few hundred more, actually.
Does the level of service on I-4, the available level of service and the capacity, limit any of that Alexander Extension growth? There's got to be a breakpoint where you can't have any more truck traffic or logistic traffic.
Well, currently, I believe it's operating at level service D, so there is not much capacity there. I suppose our transportation staff could come back and discuss those issues with you at, at the appropriate time. Obviously, the growth isn't occurring just in Plant City. It's occurring in, all along the corridor. And all those communities along the Interstate Four corridor are going to be affected by this, because all of them are looking to, or at least the most of them are looking to grow in either residentially or non-residentially with industrial growth. And the overall transportation program for that corridor will need to be addressed at some point. And I know that there are some plans and envision for improving that, but I'm not really the person probably best to answer those at this point.
Thank you.
If I could add that it is, it is a marketability question. At what point does that congestion become serious enough or severe enough that that results in developer response? And I'm, I'm seeing that in my work in different locations around the country.
All right. Well, I actually have a question. And it kind of, it's the land use and the market analysis, you've done both, and I saw, like Commissioner Joseph said, a little bit of an over, an overestimate of population growth, just in the numbers that you had presented, albeit, you know, it may be real, it may not be real. But I also thought I saw that the existing permitted residential homes exceeded the availability to, what's the word I'm looking for, to, to fill for a period of time, maybe a decade. And I also saw maybe a million square feet of, what was it, manufacturing that was in review, almost a million square feet, 900,000, that was over and above what you could absorb in, in time. So I'm wondering if your analysis of the land use change that you're coming up with in conjunction with this market study, if, if you're communicating to those different people, what might be better suited in the places? Is it, is it all getting tied together at some point?
I'll let Tom talk a little bit about the, some of those numbers, but I will say, dealing with the industrial and the absorption of the, the manufacturing and distribution, a lot of times, work was done on a fair share analysis. And in particular, it looks like Plant City is increasing its fair share for Hillsborough County as a whole. I think he had it going from about 9% up to 10 and a half percent. He mentioned the half a million square feet that is currently in review or nearing completion. There's actually another million square feet that, for, for property that is in the process of annexing into Plant City as we speak, and that we're going through a land use change, which I'll be coming to brief you on, and I believe in November. So it looks like they're increasing their share, particularly within the warehouse distribution based on their geography and their location between these two major markets of Orlando and Tampa. So even though we may have absorbed everything that we would particularly think we could absorb based on the fair share of what we've historically had, it looks like because of our geography and the, our location within the I-4 corridor, that our fair share will be increasing. And I think how, how some of that warehouse, manufacturing, distribution is being, being addressed.
Let me also add that if that million square feet that is proposed in some form of plan review, if that's for a, an owner user, that's not included in our analysis. More power to Plant City if they can secure the owner users. If, however, it is speculative for, to be built and then open to the market for, for a lease, that would suggest that in the near term, that leasing may be slow, at least at a million square feet. But that's why developers take risks.
Well, yeah.
And their ability to finance that without any pre-leasing efforts is something to be, to be watched.
Yeah. I was, I was simply making an assumption on my own part that that million square feet was basically on spec. And if you were looking to try to expand your retail or whatever, I was just with, is there, or were there conversations perhaps with those people to say you might be better suited because the, the overall plan that we're coming up with here suggests that the area where you're going might be something different? That's all.
We, as we mentioned in the report, we don't see this corridor as being the primary, primary residential growth area for Plant City. I mean, we see that in Vier and North Park Isles. We don't see it as a major distribution point. Again, we see that as, as the county line road area or Lakeside Station. But we do see that there's opportunity for growth in this area, particularly based on its, its, its unique location and the transportation infrastructure that's in place there now.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, that brings us to item six on our agenda, plant amendment trends. Ms. Kelly.
Good afternoon. Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. Today, I'm presenting a study conducted by the Planning Commission, evaluating and assessing plant amendment trends over a five-year period between 2013 and 2018. The map that he's putting up is also on this slide, which you cannot see very well, but it has a lot of information. First of all, it's color-coded to show the scale of development. In other words, green is rural, pink is suburban, blue is urban, gray is non-residential. And below the dots, the status of those plan amendments, you know, either it's been transmitted, adopted, denied, withdrawn, that type of information. We evaluated this time period in 166 amendment requests totaling approximately 2,714 acres were submitted countywide. Unincorporated Hillsborough County had 678 acres of activity, Tampa, 205 acres, Temple Terrace, 357 acres, and Plant City, 123 acres. The majority of requests or types of changes in Hillsborough County were from residential four and six to suburban mixed-use and residential nine. Tampa's changes were basically from, or the most were from residential 10 to community mixed-use 35 and community commercial 35. Temple Terrace, their activity change was residential six and 18 to commercial with an FAR of .50 and commercial and residential nine. Plant City, the majority of change requested was from res one to commercial. Most of the activity in, we looked at communities that have self-identification, and the unincorporated county, and Ludes by far was the most active with requests. That doesn't mean they were all approved, but they had 12 requests. In the university area, they had six. And in Brandon, Thonotasasa, Carrollwood, Northdale, and Riverview, they had five requests. Keystone Odessa, Sefner Mango, Apollo Beach, Sun City Center, Wy Mama, and Little Manatee had one on average for each community. We looked at three general areas where there were concentrations. We noted the concentrations are illustrated on this map and on these subareas along major corridors such as the Veterans Expressway, Dale Mayberry Highway, US Highway 301, I-75, and I-4. In the northwest, a total of 20 requests were made, four were approved, I mean, 16 were approved and four were denied. The busiest years for activity were between 2015 and 2016. In the southwest, 14 amendments were approved and three were denied. And again, the busiest years were 2016 and 2017, where 16 amendments were submitted. Okay. And then centrally, where you do really see a concentration, as you would expect in a city area, 30 amendments were approved, five were denied, and the busiest years were between 2015 and 2017. Each year had 10 requests. I'm sorry, I went through that very fast, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. It's a lot of information, and it just depends how, how much detail you want to follow up on.
Thanks, Krista. Are there any questions for Commissioner, from Commissioners? Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Krista. This is, this is exactly what I was asking Melissa about a while back. How do we track these, these amendments? And I was specifically asking also, where, where are they? I mean, how can we sort of see them geographically where they're, where they're at? So this is, this is really good. But, but, but my next question is now, we have, this is, this is, this is a database, essentially. Now, can, is there a way to actually go into this and sort of see for certain land use categories, what, or if anything, actually got built? And again, I'm particularly interested in those, those, those mixed-use designations where we are, hopefully, realizing density in the places where we want to see it at.
I believe that there is a ability to do that through GIS. We can determine what's developed and what square footage. We link to the property appraisers. So if you'd like us to come back with more information, I'm happy to do that.
Good. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners?
I'm also curious, along the same lines, you know, you, where is it happening? What's happening? What's being built? How well has it tracked with our previous projections?
2040 Plan?
Right, with our plan? Is, are, are things going where we said they should?
Well, and, and that's something that we will be looking at as part of our update to the, extending it out to 2045. And one of the things that our 2045 projections will do is that we are paying greater attention to the shorter-term interim years. That's not something that in past efforts, most of the time, we focused on 2040 and where we were going, going then. But with the use of the market analysis and understanding some of these shorter-term implications, we're taking a closer look at the 10-year projections and how they line up to see, and that, I think, will allow us, when we update this in five years, to be even better to see how we've done in terms of our projections. But yes, we can bring that to our next discussion about the 2045.
All right.
Also, I would be interested, from the school perspective, too, to see how, out of the mixed use, how many retail, or I'm sorry, residential units actually come out of those. of those final products. So those people maybe trying to get mixed use actually just went commercial versus residential, so the percentage of residential that actually happens.
Okay, we can look into that as well.
Any other Commissioners? Thanks, Krista.
Thank you.
We're to item seven on our agenda, action item for City of Tampa. Ms. Dickens.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. This item is the Planning Commission review of the City of Tampa's FY19 through FY23 Capital Improvement Program and Capital Improvement Section Scheduled Projects Update. And this is an action item and there will be a resolution provided for your vote. This review is conducted annually. It's conducted in accordance with Chapter 97-351, the Planning Commission's authorizing legislation, which requires the Planning Commission to conduct this annual review of the city's CIP. And additionally, Chapter 163 in the Florida statutes also requires that the Planning Commission update the Schedule of Projects or the projects addressing levels of service and adopt it in the comprehensive plan on an annual basis. And the review examined both the CIP and the Capital Improvement Section Schedule for consistency with the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan, as well as the plans of the other jurisdictions. So this slide here shows a summary of the different projects included in the city's CIP. You can see there are 10 program areas and 121 projects total. The total FY19 through FY23, or five-year funding amount, is approximately 498.4 million. And this slide shows it a little more graphically by different program area and percentages. These percentages are based on funding and not the number of projects, so it's the total funding amount. And you can see the largest groups in terms of funding are water, wastewater, and stormwater. And as part of this, also as part of this analysis, staff took a look at the Capital Improvement Section Schedule. So those projects, again, that are intended to enhance level of service and compared those to the priorities outlined in the Capital Improvement Section. And what we found is that approximately 44% of the projects included in the schedule are for funding, or excuse me, 44% of the funding included in the schedule are for meeting a deficiency. 23% are for future need or future growth, and 33% are for replacement or renovation of existing projects. And this is consistent with Capital Improvement Section policy that is adopted in the comprehensive plan. And Planning Commission staff also took a look at those projects that had the ability to be mapped in GIS. So if there was a particular address or location, we used GIS to see which projects are in the coastal high hazard area. You might remember that a couple of years ago, the coastal high hazard area was expanded for the City of Tampa. So last year, it reflected the new boundary. This year does, of course, as well. And taking a look at the coastal high hazard area projects, there are approximately 27 projects in the coastal high hazard area and approximately 16 of the, excuse me, 16% of the CIP funding is for those projects in the coastal high hazard area. Now, one objective in the coastal management section does state that public infrastructure and facilities should be limited in the coastal high hazard area. So we took a look, a closer look at these projects and found that primarily they are to renovate or replace existing infrastructure. For example, the Howard F. Kern wastewater treatment plant, therefore enhancing recreation areas along the shoreline, or therefore protection from flood hazards, for example, seawalls. Primarily, those are the, the main groups that the projects fall into. So Planning Commission staff felt this was consistent with the comprehensive plan policy direction. And then our recommendation, staff recommends you approve the resolution listed in your packet, finding the Schedule of Projects and the CIP consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Is there anyone from the city that wishes to speak? No, no city person here? No? Okay. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the Commission on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, are there any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Green.
Thank you. I just have one, one question, and it may be more appropriate for a city person to answer, but, but I was, I was just wondering, as we're talking about safety and the IPO Board, Level Roadways Committee, and another committees, let's say, I believe the issue came up a while, a while back in one of the meetings about streetlights, street lighting, rather. And I'm not sure, which, which category would that, would that show up under transportation? Or if it were in the schedule?
If it, if it were, so what's attached in your packet is the schedule. So these are only the projects that address levels of service. So it's not the complete CIP.
Okay.
The complete CIP is available, on the first page of your packet, there's a link, and the projects would show up there. Now, something like streetlights, I don't know offhand whether the city would capitalize that in their, or whether the city would consider that in their CIP, or it would be another funding.
Special.
Mm-hmm, another funding project or pot. But I can certainly ask about where streetlights would come from, what funding source they would use, where, where you could find information on that, if you'd like me to.
Just curious, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Joseph.
Oh, thank you for the presentation. I had one quick question for you, and you may or may not know the answer to this. 16% of the funds were in the coastal high hazard. The majority, you said, was for repair or renovation. Did we have a number on how much was for new construction, possibly, in the coastal high hazard area? If not, you can, you can get back to me by email.
I will probably have to, to get back with you. I have the numbers in an Excel sheet at my desk, but I can get back to you, get that to you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from Commissioners? All right, public comment will be closed, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for a finding of consistency for Tampa Fiscal Year 19 through Fiscal Year 23 Capital Improvement Program and Capital Improvement Section, CIP Schedule Updated Projects.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Kress. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously by those members present.
Don't go anywhere, Melissa, you're still here.
So that brings us to City of Temple Terrace. Ms. Dickens, imagine seeing you here.
Good afternoon again. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. And this item is the Planning Commission review of the City of Temple Terrace CIP. Again, this is another action item and a resolution is provided in your packet. For Temple Terrace, this month, we're reviewing the CIP. And then in the next couple of months, we'll be coming back to you, working collaboratively with city staff to develop the CIP Scheduled Projects. So you'll see that portion at a later date. And again, as you heard in the previous presentation, this is a review that is conducted annually. It's required by the Planning Commission's authorizing legislation, and staff reviewed the CIP for Temple Terrace for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, as well as the plans of adjacent jurisdictions. And here is a summary slide. This is for the City of Temple Terrace CIP projects. There are a total of 262 projects, and the total five-year funding amount is approximately 41.4 million. And Commissioners, one note about this list, this was the list that we received from the city as of August 3rd. They have indicated to us there may be some minor tweaks or changes that may be made to this list between now and when it's adopted. So I did want to let you know that the final version that's adopted may look slightly different than this list. And again, a graph showing the CIP funding and percentages. And you can see the largest groups in terms of funding for the City of Temple Terrace are public safety, which includes police and fire, transportation, and sewer projects. And Planning Commission staff reviewed the CIP for consistency with the Capital Improvement Section guidance in the comprehensive plan. And one of the policies in the Capital Improvement Section 1.5.5 states that general funds should not be used for those facilities that have dedicated funding sources, such as water, wastewater, solid waste. And staff did review the general fund expenditures, the way that the city provides us their CIP is actually done by fund. So it's very convenient, very easy for us to, to check and verify. And we found that none of these types of projects relied on general funds. We also looked at some other policies in the Capital Improvements element. 1.5.10 and 1.5.11 stated that all projects within the first three years of the city's CIP be funded with committed revenue sources. These would be things like ad valorem taxes, gas taxes, user charges. And we were able to review the funding sources and timing and found that the CIP funding was consistent with these requirements. And I also wanted to call out a few projects that the city included in their CIP that further the comprehensive plan direction and the goals, objectives, and policies in the plan. These are a few representative projects. They're not a complete list, but just to show how the city's CIP is lining up with our comp plan policy direction. For example, water main improvements, those support comprehensive plan direction in the potable water and wastewater elements to connect development with infrastructure. There is the, the various stormwater projects included in the CIP, further the, the policy regarding continued optimal operation of the stormwater facilities, and the, the family recreation complex projects, and the diverse set of overall parks projects. Within the CIP, there's, there are a number of, of parks projects throughout the city, further the, the comprehensive plan objective to assure effective recreation service delivery and also do it throughout the city. So I did want to call attention to the fact that the comprehensive plan is, is being directly implemented in the city's CIP. And with that, I, I do have another lengthy recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the resolution in your packet, finding the CIP, the City of Temple Terrace CIP, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of their comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Is there anyone from the city who wishes to address the Commission, seeing none? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the Commission on this agenda item, seeing none? Are there any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one question, though, for you, city. Okay. Regarding the, and again, this may be something that's sort of in the full schedule, but the, I won't say proposed, but the often discussed or talked about trail along the easement, the utility easement running east-west, heading over towards Mosi. And I was wondering if that was going to somehow find its way into capital improvement program at some point in the not-too-distant future? Because a lot of decisions need to be made about that area.
I'm Ian Nissick, Community Development Director. That's pretty much a comprehensive plan of action between Hillsborough County, FDOT, and City of Temple Terrace, because that's a coordination and collaboration between the three agencies. Under the planning and zoning, of course, we are working with these outside agencies to have a better plan of actions, to put a comprehensive plan moving forward. To answer your question, yes. Has been ongoing progress. We made some success throughout the years, but again, hasn't been completed as a final package to put it forward, so.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, public comment will be closed, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Move for a finding of consistency for Temple Terrace Fiscal Year 2019 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Marino. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously by members present. Item number nine on our agenda, Hillsborough County Public Schools Tentative Five-Year Facilities Work Plan. Krista's back.
I'm back. Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. Based on an interlocal agreement between the county and the school board for each of, each jurisdiction, the Planning Commission is asked to review the district's five-year facilities plan annually for consistency with the comprehensive plans. The school district's five-year facility plan is the work program adopted by the school board to provide an, to provide adequate facility capacity for projected student enrollment. Ms. Amber Dickerson Dickinson, Planning and Siding Manager for Hillsborough County Public Schools, is here to present the proposed five-year plan and to answer any of your questions. Staff has reviewed the district's facility plan for 2018, 19 to 2022, 23, and finds the facility plan consistent with the comprehensive plans of Hillsborough County and the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City. Following Ms. Dickinson's presentation, staff requests that the board take action to approve the resolution, finding the proposed facilities plan consistent with the counties and cities' comprehensive plan, and to forward that recommendation to the Hillsborough County School Board. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Amber Dickerson, Hillsborough County Schools. I'm the manager of planning and siding, and I joined you in the non-voting corner of the Planning Commission recently. So hello, thanks for giving me some time to go through our plans. So it's kind of a capital facilities kind of day. So per ILA, we, we share a tentative plan with the Planning Commission, all the municipalities, and the county to get input, and then we take the final to our board. So I'll run through the tentative program with you. On an annual basis, we create a five-year facilities plan for the school district, much like you do with transportation, water, different resources. So for us, this is our proposed construction. Now, I do have to preface that the five-year plan's not a wish list. It has to be financially feasible. Therefore, we can only put projects which we have money for in the plan. So this is not our wish list, but it's our, our most important needs. So 2018-19, we opened an addition at Sickles High School of 300 student stations. For those that you don't know, it's in the northwest portion of the county. Also, Woodson Pre-K through Eight School Conversion. So in the north Tampa University area, we had a Van Buren Middle School, and we actually closed Mosi Elementary, so we had to get more elementary seats in the area. And it was an underutilized facility, so we took an elementary school and a middle school, combined them together to create Woodson K-8. Shaw Elementary School, I got an update today, very exciting news, temporary CO for an addition that Dr. Patel is placing private contribution for Pre-K at the Shaw site. So that should open in the next two or three weeks. Now, we're not reassigning any new students to that school, but it will be housing Pre-K initiatives in that whole area. 2019-20, City of Tampa Robinson High School addition, another 300 seats, mainly to serve infill population in the South Tampa area. 2020-2021, our new high school, TTT. It's proposed to be located on Baum, 672 South County, both Leonard and East Bay. Need relief, Leonard is definitely over its capacity right now. We put an addition on East Bay, but it's just a matter of time before they're over as well. So that will help relieve those two high schools. Elementary D in Belmont will help relieve some of the elementary schools in the area. Then we have a PK through Eight and an Elementary E, which we have not determined the site locations on. We do have a couple sites in the water set development for an elementary K-8 or middle, so we're kind of looking at timing and access, in particular, for the ones in water set. So this slide basically shows the same information, it's just organized. So this slide basically shows the same information, it's just organized in a different way, so you can see by level what we're proposing for construction projects. And again, yet another view of the projects by new schools, conversions, additions. Now, this is our 10-through-20-year plan. It coincides with the Tyndall Oliver Long Range Facility Plan that's created. And I would advise anyone who's interested in what's going on with growth in schools to read the plan. It's located on our growth management page on the main school board website. So mainly, as you can see, most of the schools are needed in South counties. So it's kind of a no-brainer because that's where all of the growth is going at this time. Okay, so breaking down kind of the projects by maintenance and new construction. So $220 million for major maintenance, new construction 179, renovations zero. That's very important, and I'll get to more detail on that on a later slide. Also, we have a lot of miscellaneous expenses, like buses, we have a lot of debt, property and conversions. Also, I want to note, we are holding $14 million of projected funds from impact fees for a partially funded high school in the fifth year. Again, some of the miscellaneous things, school bus purchases, site purchases. Also, we'd like to highlight our big-ticket projects, anything that reaches a million and above. So we have re-roof, HVAC, and a couple, yeah, additional re-roofs. So major systems are always costly, and they raise to the top. So this slide is the somewhat depressing slide, I'll forewarn you. So total funds, $1 billion. Wow, that sounds like such a huge sum of money. But we have over 200 facilities, so we collect those funds through local millage, impact fees, CIE tax, and PICO maintenance, and some bond revenues. But our projected needs are $220 million maintenance, that's what we're covering, and 179 in new construction. However, in red, you can see that we have over $1 billion in deferred maintenance needs. So that is why you're seeing it in the newspaper, basically on a daily basis, that we are somewhat in a crisis when it comes to keeping up with maintenance. We have 75 renovations on the books that we have not been doing in the past 10 years. So we did get approved last Thursday by the B.O.C.C. to be placed on the ballot for a referendum for maintenance and capital items. So if you want to access the whole plan, here is a link to the growth management page. Also, just as FYI, the board will be taking the final plan to, or will be taking the final plan to the board on October 2nd. So it may change slightly just because of little budget tweaks that we get from DOE, but otherwise, all of the projects should be consistent. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Amber. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Buzza.
Amber, I hate to ask you this question, I hope it's a typo. Page 11 of the report, high school TTT, $61 million?
Sir, that is not a typo.
$61 million?
And if you have been to a new high school campus, you will see why it costs that much.
$61 million? Okay.
And that's based on actually the DOE student station cost. So that is the approved cost by DOE per student station. And actually, Hillsborough tends to be lower than the cost per student station that the state issues.
Wow.
Well, we tend to be slightly lower. We build our schools slightly lower than the cost per student station, but that figure is correct.
Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a much easier question, just a personal curiosity for you. Won't put you on the spot here. What is the difference between major maintenance and renovation that you guys use for your accounting?
Yeah, like major maintenance is major systems, like the roof, AC units. Renovations, like upgrading the entire school. So you can only imagine, we have over 200 schools aging over 100 years. The technology has changed a little over the last 100 years. So really, we should be on, and a lot of other districts are on, a strict schedule to renovate every school every 10 years or so. I mean, I'm making up that number, but every so often, they revisit the schools and bring the technology up. And I mean, also, just normal advances as well, like furniture, paint, things like that. Major renovations, a whole redo of basically a school.
So we're like falling behind in maintenance and renovations also?
Yes. You got it. Yes?
Thank you.
Commissioner Marino.
Thank you, Amber. This is one of my favorite presentations from last year, because I went to five Hillsborough County schools in my lifetime, so all this is near and dear to my heart. But the question I have specifically, Woodson K-8, that is underserved community, there's poverty in that area, that's a little bit north of Sulfur Springs, which has become a K-8. The K-8 school in South County, are you aware of, is there a strategy to make it K-8 in terms of cost-saving, or is it going to the community school concept in an area that, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't presently have one? And how does then that change the cost when you're building a K-8 from scratch versus implementing a K-8, like with Sulfur Springs and like with Woodson?
Okay, I would probably say that there's a cost savings if you build it like a K-8 from the get-go. And operational standpoint, it's a better setup. As for the K-8 at Woodson, really what prompted that was the need for elementary seats. Now, the K products are very popular, especially for the charter schools in the South County, but they do offer, from a capacity planning standpoint, a little more flexibility than a straight-up middle school would, just because you have to build specific bathrooms for the smaller kids versus the bigger kids, so that you could change out the school to different grade levels if you needed to in the future. Because we have done some conversion, because the popularity, let's say, of middle schools all of a sudden declines, so maybe we have more seats available, we can more easily transfer those over.
And then just one more question. From last year to this year, has there been an increase in costs, and if so, how much from the potential or the school security measures that are now necessary by legislation? How much of a, if there was any type of increase in now construction costs because of changes to school security codes?
Well, I can't speak to the funds that they've allocated thus far. I know there are additional expenses, and they are securing the schools more, but I really can't speak to the cost versus last year to this year and the events that happened and spurred that, but I know that that may be a piece of what they're going to request for the referendum.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amber, I'm curious, because you said we have operating schools in the district that are approaching 100 years old or over 100 years old?
Yes, I believe Hillsborough High is up there.
That's what I was gonna say. Hillsborough and a couple of schools, I mean, Lee was probably one of the older schools.
Yeah, but even schools that were, you know, constructed in like the 90s, we had that huge pop and growth, so we accumulated a lot of debt, we built a lot of schools. Now those schools need to be renovated. So that's one of the big bubbles, too. It's not only like the very, very old schools, but we haven't been keeping pace with renovations, period.
Okay. I was just curious, though, with the older schools, I mean, is the district sort of locked into a much more regular maintenance and renovation process as a result of the aging, the age of the facility itself?
We can only do what we have funding for. So really, at this point, it's putting out fires.
Okay. Now, I'm asking that question in the context of what's been happening nationwide, of course. And I don't have school-aged kids anymore, but with what we've been hearing in the news about, you know, lead water pipes and other types of things in public facilities, I'm just curious. I know that's on your radar screen, but...
Oh, it's on our radar. Yes, and we are doing testing, as you've seen in the newspaper. I mean, that definitely is always on our radar, and we have a whole team dedicated to that.
Okay.
But I can't speak on specifics of that. Sorry.
Sure. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Public comment will be closed, and again, I'll entertain a motion. Somebody.
I'll move that we find the school district five-year program of the school district educational facilities planned for 2018, 19 through 2022, 23, consistent with the feature of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan, the Plant City Comprehensive Plan, the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and the Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan.
We have a motion by Commissioner Thrower, and a second by Commissioner Green. Is there any discussion? All is in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously by members present. That brings us to item 10 on our agenda, start of our briefings.
Thank you. Krista Kelly, Planning Commission Staff. I'm presenting CPA 1809. The site is located on Victoria Street, north of State Road 60. It's a privately initiated map amendment. It is a small-scale amendment. It's in the urban service area and within the Brandon community planning area. The site's 8.4 acres in size, it consists of two parcels. There is a single-family home on the smaller parcel. As you can see, the surrounding area is very suburban and urban, it's a mixture in that area. There are townhomes to the west, it's across the street, this is Brandon High School, then there are single-family homes to the north, and then, of course, along State Road 60, commercial development. The adopted future land use map designates 7.91 acres residential 9 and a smaller portion 0.19 residential 6. It looks like that's the right of way of the road. The proposal is to change the land use category to residential 12. This map, although the proposed map looks like a spot of Rose 12 in the area, there really is a mixture of densities that are not reflected by the land use categories in the area. The impact of this change would increase the number of dwelling units from 72 units to 101 units. Both land use categories allow up to 175,000 square feet of non-residential uses. And the FAR on the smaller portion, on the rez-6 portion would increase to 0.50. And that was quick, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions on this one from commissioners? Right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Randy Kranschad, Planning Commission Staff. The next two amendments are privately initiated and in the same immediate area, the first one being Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-11. It's at Causeway Boulevard and 90th Street in the Palm River area. It's a large-scale plan amendment, approximately 16 acres in size. It is in the urban service area, and as I mentioned, in the greater Palm River planning area. You can see it outlined there in pink on the aerial. It consists of a number of different parcels and folio numbers. It's primarily, there's a few single-family homes on the amendment site, and most of the property is undeveloped. There you can see Causeway Boulevard and 90th Street running north and south. The general area is suburban and urban in development scale. So future land use plan currently adopted is a residential 9 category, nine dwelling units per acre, and the applicant is requesting a residential 20 plan category. There you see some mixed-use categories, high density to the east, you see some office commercial 20 in red a bit to the west. It's a mix of land uses in this general area. So the impacts would be going from a residential 9, future land use classification, to the 20, a potential increase from 151 dwelling units to 335 dwelling units. You could do up to 175,000 square feet in non-residential development. There you see the floor area ratios. However, this parcel, these parcels in this location really do not meet locational criteria per the policies in the comprehensive plan. So again, this is in the Palm River area with a request to go to residential 20, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions from commissioners on this agenda item? No? Item C.
All right. Then we'll go to the next amendment, which will be number 11. The previous one was 10. This is at Causeway Boulevard and 86th Street. It's basically almost catty-corner on the other side of Causeway from the site you just saw. Another privately initiated map amendment, a large-scale amendment, again, in the urban service area, greater Palm River area, consists of two parcels. You see them there on the north side of Causeway. Again, suburban and urban scale in development. This site is primarily vacant. You can see Causeway there and then 86th Street running to the north. Causeway has recently been improved in this area. It is a state road. Currently, again, this one is residential 9, and you see, again, mixed-use categories of varying densities, up to 20. You see office commercial 20 on the south side of Causeway Boulevard. You see residential 9 primarily in the area, some residential 6 off there to the southwest. And they, too, are asking for residential 20 land use category. This being a site about twice the size of the previous one, would see a potential increase in dwelling units from 310 to 690. Again, your potential square footage for non-residential with floor area ratios. However, this site also does not meet the locational criteria for non-residential development found in the comprehensive plan. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on this one, but it's very similar to the one I just proposed, I just presented.
Again, thanks, Randy. Any questions for Randy on this briefing? Commissioner Chris.
I assume there's some kind of community plan for this area?
There is the Greater Palm River Community Plan, which does recognize Causeway as a major corridor, which runs through it. It basically calls for non-residential development in Palm River community, more over at 78th Street and Causeway. And quite frankly, these increases in density would further the intent of the community plan. I believe public utilities are just coming into this area, which would provide for greater intensities and whatnot. And for those familiar with Causeway, I think the lack of... And for those familiar with Causeway, I think the lack of utilities has provided for some land uses that were not preferable for the community plan. You see a lot of heavier or intensive commercial, open storage, things of that nature. So hopefully now that utilities are, again, coming to the area, the city and the county are relooking at their inter-local agreement. And I think the county is looking at taking over this area. We'll keep our fingers crossed. But yeah, so we could see some good things happening then in Greater Palm River.
So the community is generally, you think, supportive of
Yes.
of this increased intensity?
Yeah, I would think they will be. On Causeway, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from commissioners? Thanks, Randy. Item 10D, Krista.
Krista Kelly, Planning Commission Staff. I'm presenting CPA 1812. This site is located on the west side of Kings Avenue, north of Lumston Road. It's a privately initiated map amendment in the urban service area and within the Brandon community planning area. The site's 16.6 acres in size approximately. Currently, it's developed with a driving range with accessory pro shop, batting cage, putt-putt golf, that type of thing. As you can see, the surrounding area, again, is suburban in character. The site is adjacent to a shopping center to the, to the west, I mean, to the south. And then across Lumston Road, which is over here, there is another shopping center. There are apartments, townhomes, and single-family homes in the area. The adopted land use map has designated this site residential 12, as is the area to the north, south, and west. The applicant is proposing an increase in density to residential 20. The impact of this change on the 16 acres would be to increase the number of dwelling units from 199 units to 333 dwelling units. Both land use categories allow up to 175,000 square feet. The FAR would increase from .50 to .75. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Krista. Any questions for Krista on this item? Right. 10E, Randy.
Okay. Randy Cranchak again, Planning Commission Staff. This is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-14. Out in the east Hillsborough area of the county. It's on the west side of Sam Aston Road, just north of Trappinel Road. It's privately initiated, small-scale map amendment on 5.3 acres. And it is out in the rural area, as you can see from the aerial. So, it's a rural scale out there. The area, the general area, again, agricultural and undeveloped. This particular site is a mobile home park that is currently designated residential two on the Comprehensive Plan, Future Land Use Map, to recognize what has been there for quite a while. Their request is for a residential four plan category. And what that would do would increase potentially the mobile home park from 10 dwelling units to 21 dwelling units. So, that's what I have to tell you on this one, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Randy. Any questions from commissioners for Randy on this briefing item? Commissioner Green.
Randy, does, do we have a provision in Hillsborough County zoning that allows for either an equivalent density or higher density for redeveloping mobile home parks?
That's what you just heard a couple meetings ago.
Right.
So, let's say that this one here came in.
Right.
Okay? And they're legally non-conforming. Let's just assume that that's the case. I don't know if that's the case or not. But, so they could do, for example, 10 tiny homes or 10 singles, regular single-family if they could fit it on there, or 10 townhomes. However, again, well, I take that back. I'm sorry. You got me so excited because I remembered that last, no. No, not here, because this is in the rural area. That would only apply in the urban service area.
Oh, urban service area, okay.
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 Thanks, Randy.
Thank you.
Brings us item number 11, our Executive Director's Report. Ms. Zornita, it's your turn in the target box.
Thanks. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. At your seat, you should have your Executive Director's Report, which chronicles a number of meetings that either I or other staff have been having on a number of ongoing projects. To highlight just a couple of them, we have been having some discussions with the University Square Mall about their future redevelopment. So that's kind of exciting to see. We also, Beth Alden and I met with, and Rich Clarendon and I met with Bob O'Malley, who's now with Brightline, about their future extension into downtown Tampa. Hopefully, maybe, we'll see. Don't want to jinx anything. Also, last week, the Board of County Commissioners took the first steps following what City Council has done to institute a moratorium on amendments to the Comprehensive Plan that would be to submerged lands. So that plan amendment that y'all talked about in Rocky Point definitely not, pun intended, made a lot of waves in the city and in the county because they, they followed suit. City of Tampa has instituted a moratorium with that regard. Now the county is in the process of doing that. We're working with both jurisdictions on policy language that will go in the Comprehensive Plan as a permanent solution. But this is a temporary stop until that's in place. And then, as Mark mentioned on Friday, we had an internal charrette with the City of Plant City staff about their midtown development. They've been going through some RFPs for the whole property that the city owns and wanted us to take a look at how maybe it might work in different pieces. And so we worked with the city staff on some ideas about that and are having one of our on-call consultants do some quick graphics to illustrate that for the city manager. So that was, I was happy that we were able to help them in that manner. We've been very busy, and this list does not chronicle all of the things that staff has been out doing for its time Tampa Bay. They have been at transit stations, at different community organizations, at pop-up events, at festivals. We were at the home show over Labor Day. So far, the last I heard, we had over 7,000, I think, people who've responded to the survey. So we're doing very well, but it is over three counties. So you would expect that we would do better than our survey that was just for Hillsborough County the last time. So, we're pleased with that. But if you have friends, neighbors, coworkers, please share with them about the survey. We've still got about three weeks left for folks to take it. Sharing it on social media has been very effective for us so far, as are the in-person events. So if there's still time, if you have a Rotary or some organization you would like us to come to, we have staff who are able and willing to go wherever they're needed. Let's see. You also have in front of you a pretty copy of our strategic plan that we all worked so hard on. And I really appreciate everybody's input in that. So that's yours to keep as a memento, to reflect on, review from time to time where we're headed, and hold me accountable for how we are doing in terms of achieving these things. And then, last two things. In October, I had been planning our regular meeting to start at 3 o'clock. If we want to, I was sitting there thinking about the discussion about the land use and the transportation, and that it may be valuable to have some discussion with Beth and I before we start jumping into the results. So if we want to add a workshop component, then we would probably need to move the meeting up to 2 o'clock. So that would, I'll see if Beth is available that day. And if so, we will, we'll do that. And then, lastly, a couple of contracts that are closing out for FY 2019. We will be starting for FY 19, like Diane Salz. We have a contract with her. So, a number of our contracts from this last year will be continuing, such as the real estate market analysts who've been working with us on the 2045, our prime consultant on the 2045 that we did the RFP for. Their contract goes beyond the fiscal year. So you'll be in next month's chart in your backup. You'll see those that continue. But I just wanted to mention Diane's the one that we will, we start a new contract for every year. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thanks, Melissa. Commissioners have any darts to throw at our executive director? No? Hey, thank you.
I got off easy, thanks.
Brings us item number 12, other business, chair's business. I'll take a pass. Is there any old business? Any new business? Committee reports.
Ms. Wild.
I have an update here. Have an update for our 36th Annual Planning and Design Awards. Brendan McLaughlin will again be hosting that event for us. And we are excited about the incredible entries that have been received so far. And our winners will be announced at, on that Thursday, October the 25th, at T-Pep and Hospitality Center. We'd like for you all to reserve your seats. The ticket prices are $65 each. Come join us at the reception at 6:15 PM. And the actual awards assembly will begin at 7:15. We'd like to thank the City of Temple Terrace for coming back as a community sponsor for us. But we have open, open sponsorships. If you know of anybody who wants to join that listing, or if you'd like to do that yourself, please feel free to do so. So, registration tickets and sponsor information can be found on our website event here at the, at the Planning Commission. Thank you, and I'll see you there.
Thank you, Commissioner Wild.
You're welcome.
No other committee reports. Okay. Are we going, okay, we have a workshop across the hall. I would assume that we're going to grab some food.
I'm not sure if the pizzas arrived yet.
Food may not be here yet, but we're going to be having a workshop across the hall. So with that, we're adjourned.
More than 20 million people visit Hillsborough County each year to experience the sights, the sounds, and the people that make this area a great place to explore. This morning, we're going to see Hillsborough County from a whole different view as we set sail on the Big Red Balloon. Dave Gardner is the owner and captain for this flight. The Big Red Balloon operates seven days a week and has been bringing ballooning adventures to residents and visitors since 1992, a great small business that contributes to local tourism's economic impact. So we're here on the Big Red Balloon, and we're getting ready to take off. There've been some other balloons that have already taken off. And look, we're leaving the ground. Dave, how long have you been flying?
I've been flying balloons for about 18 years. I've been the owner of the company for about 16.
How high do you fly the balloon?
I usually don't fly much above 1,000 feet. Maybe 2,000 if there's winds that we need above it. But for the most part, you're going to be able to find the amount of direction change that you need within that first 1,000 feet. And Florida being so flat, if you go higher, just everything below you gets further away. So there's really nothing to go up and see.
Well, I think that's part of the appeal of ballooning because you can kind of still sometimes hear the sights and sound of this world we live in.
Yeah, exactly. I love about, in fact, this altitude right about here might be my favorite. To be a balloonist, you really have to, you really cannot be a control freak because you have to be willing to go in the direction the balloon will go.
It's really go with the flow kind of sport, huh?
It really is, it really is. We have such, such a small amount of control over the direction that that control is crucial. We schedule seven days a week, all year round. We only fly early mornings right at sunrises. There are some times that you might get a chance in...